This is a meeting of Wilmington City Council's Committee of the Whole. My name is Bud Freo from the Eighth District and I will chair the meeting this evening. First, what I'd like to do is a roll call of council members. Councilmember Linda Gray. Councilmember Cynthia Oliver. Councilmember Michelle Harley.
Present.
Councilmember Bash Turner. Councilmember Yolanda McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Johnson. Councilmember Zero Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Ashima Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Sam Guy.
Present.
Councilmember Loretta Walsh.
Here.
President Hanifa Shabazz.
Here.
I want to backtrack. Councilmember Bash Turner.
Here.
Just my opening comments, our role tonight is not to discuss legislative matters. We are present to determine whether Ernest Trippie Congo the Second, at any time during the current session of City Council moved his residence to a location outside of the borders of the second council district he represented, thereby immediately forfeiting his office as council member and rendering the district vacant pursuant to Wilmington City Charter. Section 2103 of Wilmington City Charter states, "A member shall remain a resident of council-matic district from which he was elected during his term of office. The councilman shall cease to possess any of these qualifications, including in the case of a councilman elected from a council-matic district, residents in the district from which he was elected, or if he shall violate any express prohibition of this charter, or if he be convicted of a crime involving moral perpetuity, his office shall immediately be forfeited and become vacant." It goes on to say, "A member charged with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture of his office shall be entitled to a public hearing on demand. The council shall be the sole judge of the qualification and elections of its members." Mr. Congo stated during a July 30 interview with Amy Cherry of WDEL that he had moved out of the district. He confirmed the statement with Delaware Online on July 31 stating family reasons for his move. He also confirmed the moving in an email to council on August 19. On July 30, on July 30 after hearing the interview, President Hanifa Shabazz had no recourse but to notify Mr. Congo that his action of moving from the second district meant that he had to forfeit it and left the seat vacant.
Point of order.
Though initially, Mr. Congo, on a public hearing, he changed his mind and made a request on August 24. That is what brings us here this evening. We are to act as a semi judicial body to judge whether Mr. Congo no longer met the qualifications of the issue of residency for a city council member. Council once again is the sole judge of the qualifications and that is our only role this evening. In my 24 years as a council member, this is the first time the council has been required to fill that role. In order to be respectful to Mr. Congo, the residents of Wilmington and the institution of city council, I have established the following process for tonight's meeting. The first speaker will be Mr. Congo and he will have five minutes to make comments. After Mr. Congo, we will open the meeting to public comment. Each member of the public will have three minutes to comment on the issue facing us this evening. All members of the public need to raise their hand by 5:25 PM this evening. Following public comment, we will turn to city council. Each of my colleagues will have five minutes to comment on the matter before us this evening. We will go in order, starting with the first district. If you prefer not to make any comments, just say pass. At the conclusion of all comments, each member will answer the following question, would he yes or no? At any time during the current session of city council, did Ernest Trippie Congo move his residence to a location outside of the borders of the second district he was representing, thereby immediately forfeiting his office as council member and rendering the district vacant pursuant to Wilmington City Charter? A yes vote means moved and vacated the seat. A no vote means he did not move and he retains his seat. At this time, I want to turn the floor over to Mr. Trippie Congo for his remarks. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Congo.
I thought Councilmember Turner said something.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Congo.
Alright, can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, thank you. So first, I just want to thank everyone for allowing this time for me to come in and just talk about my residency in the second district. It's something that I've been wanting to talk about ever since it first came up and I'm just thankful that I'm finally allowed to do so. I just want the council to know that it was never my intention to not represent the second district. A district that has elected me for the past 12 years for three elections. Now, that was never my intent and I think that that means something. Also, I just hope that council realizes that I want to continue to serve and I want to continue to serve until this term is over. And I want to thank the residents of the second district for understanding and still supporting me and for understanding that it was not my intent to ever not represent the district. So, and they came through and they understood the facts and they all, they read what they read, they heard what they heard and they understood and still supported me. So that's, I think that speaks volumes of what the second district did this past election. So I want to thank them for that. And I never, I never changed my residency in the second district. I've always maintained residence in the second district for the whole 12 years, for the entire 12 years that I've been on council. So I think also that that matters. And really, I mean, that's pretty much all I have to say. Again, I just want to thank council. I hope that they understand, as the public did. I know what the charter reads and I've never ran from, I've never hid from my actions. I took action to correct my actions, but again, I never changed my residency. And I think those intentions should mean, hopefully those intentions mean something to council, the way they have meant to the public. And especially specifically the second district, because at the end of the day, it's really about the second district. And they overwhelmed me, showed me support a couple of weeks ago. So again, I just want to continue to thank them. And again, I'm going to accept whatever happens at the end of this meeting. However, council votes, I'm going to accept that. And I just thank them, I thank you in advance for understanding and for, I guess, putting the human element in the charter. The charter does have gray areas and I think that's where council becomes the judge. Even in a court of law, there's room for, you know, for the human element. So, and hopefully this council allows that. And I just, again, I just, I just hope that council realizes that I never meant to not represent a district that I've represented for the last 12 years, just for a few months. So with that, you know, I just, I just want to thank you again, thank the public and I'm looking forward to the vote this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Congo. We appreciate your comments. At this time, we'll open it up for a public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the matter before us this evening? This time, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm going to move right into city council's comments and we're going to start with Councilmember Linda Gray of the first district.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I'm going to repeat myself from the last meeting that we had. Our President Hanifa Shabazz unilaterally removed Councilman Congo from his position. She also did not allow him to speak at or join or speak as a participant in several of our council meetings. Because of all this, it's very, it's been very confusing. And I must also say that the administration was complicit in this because my understanding is they suspended Councilman Congo's salary also. So, this has been on our agenda for three times. The first, this type trying to address this matter has been on the agenda three times. The first time, it was hell. The second time, we voted it down and now we're here again. As far as I'm concerned, our president unilaterally charged Councilman Congo, convicted him and sentenced him. I know no place in the United States, and from my legal background, where there isn't some type of due process. And also in the charter, as Chairman Freo read, it says council is the only determinant of removing a councilman from his position. And unfortunate to President Shabazz, council means 13, not just her. So now here we are again, trying to clean up this mess, which is a mess. We really don't have a lot of evidence. We really don't have a lot of statements. We just have actions that have been done. Lack of seat, lack of salary, and the third time, we're discussing this. Based on my background in criminal justice and judicial, I can't be part of this. We're trying to fix something that was totally messed up to begin with, done, I don't want to say illegally, but done without the proper process. It is the process that is flawed and because of that, I can't be part of this. Thank you.
Alright, I don't think Councilmember Oliver joined us. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to say for the record that I do believe that process matter. I'm not debating what triggered us being here, but our response, I believe, to this incident and how it was executed according to the charter is, it has not been compliant. If you look at section 2101, the election of councilmen and vacancies, you will see clearly that the charter basically lets us know that whenever a vacancy exists, that we should certify that vacancy. And as we all know, that on August 20th, five members were contacted to co-sponsor the legislation. Okay, not the full body, like the charter says, that should decide, but five council members were contacted. They agreed to be a co-sponsor on a legislation that was put on the agenda on 8/20. And for the record, it was agenda number 4851, which we still haven't seen that. And I believe that we should do the right thing, but I think doing the right thing the right way matters as well. There's been a practice on how we handle vacancies on this 107 session. A precedence has been set for two vacancies. We had Councilman Chiquocha, Councilman Williams, that we had that practice. And for them, we had legislation that came before the council as the charter instructs to certify the vacancy. Once the vacancies were certified and voted on, the seats were officially vacant based on the legislation and the vote. And at that time, everything was discontinued and the seat was filled. But I just want to say for the record, section 2101 says when a vacancy occurs in the office of councilmen, the city council should certify that a vacancy exists. A vacancy occurring more than 30 days prior to the date of the primary election in which city officers are nominated can be filled the next succeeding general election. So, the charter clearly states that any vacancy, rather for whatever reason, that seat should be certified. So, that has not happened. What happened to that piece of legislation? Where you have five council members that co-sponsored that legislation, again, was agenda number 4851 to certify the vacancy and that hasn't been done yet. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley. Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Chair. Question, question for you, for the chair. Where's, what are we voting on here tonight? Is this a discussion? Are we voting on, voting on a vacancy as my colleague just spoke about?
We will take a vote at the end of the meeting on the question that I presented in my earlier comments.
And what's your question?
I'll read it again at the end of the, at the end of the comments.
Well, give me, give me the synopsis of it.
It was right on the agenda, sorry. Right on the agenda that was posted.
Okay, so why aren't we, why don't we have the resolution that my colleague just spoke about?
Sir, we're not dealing with the resolution tonight. If you would like to make comments.
I don't know. I'm asking you a question on why the resolution, since you're, since you're the leader of this meeting of the whole. So I'm asking you a question, why didn't you put it on the agenda as my colleague just asked you? So I'm asking you that question again.
Sir, we're beyond that point. We're here tonight to act.
No, 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 no. We're not behind that point.
I'm not going to say anything.
I have the floor.
Do you want to make comments?
You, as the chair, a question.
Do you want to make comments?
I know, I want to ask you a question first.
Sir, you've asked a question. Resolution is not on the agenda tonight.
So you're, but why wouldn't you put it on the agenda? We're sitting here having a hearing about vacancies.
Mr. Congo requested a public hearing. We're trying, we're trying to present the public hearing this evening. Do you want to make any further comments?
Since you don't want to, since you don't want to answer that, I think that Mr. Congo, Councilman Congo, but I'm not going to call him Mr. Congo, I'm going to call him Councilman Congo, first and foremost. Councilman Congo should, go ahead, since you wanted to put up legislation the last time to add an investigation to see if he moved somewhere, we need to put legislation up to see who stripped him of his rights. You or Council President, somebody stripped him of his rights. And if it wasn't you two, then that means the administration gave the okay to personnel to strip him of his rights as a council member before due process. So we should, we should launch an investigation into that. That's one, that's one thing. Also, like Councilman Congo stated, he never, he never sold the property on 24th Street. He still owns the property on 24th Street. So his residence is 24th Street, just like Council President in the past lived in another location that she leased and ended up moving back to a home that she owns in the South Bridge. So her residence has always been in South Bridge. But now we're on a witch hunt to say what someone has done and what they haven't done. He still owns the property on 24th. He still lives there, so is his residence. But you guys want to drag this out and now we have a hearing with nothing, nothing that's going to be tangible because we're not even voting on the vacancy as it is. So you can keep playing this game and this is your last claim of fame on the retirement, Councilman Freo. So if that's what you want to do, along with still in Mr. Congo, Councilman Congo's legislation for body cameras, you also have that coming up October 1st. So now you want to take his legislation for body cameras for our community, in the black community, and now you want to go ahead and sponsor that with Council President. So all of this is a game, so you can go ahead and have your last claim of fame to step on our community as you have done for all the years you have been in office. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Chair. My statement is simple, that the seat was never vacated by resolution. We never got that opportunity. So to leave this district without representation, so close to the end of the term, I believe is totally unwise. And that is my position on this whole thing.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. Councilmember Johnson, have you joined us? Councilmember Johnson, have you joined us? Can you say your name?
So you're. Yes, 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 Councilman Freo. I apologize.
I know you weren't here for opening comments. We're giving each council member five minutes to comment on the matter before us this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, okay, so are you ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good, good evening, everyone. I think this is simple. You know, we have rules that are in place for a reason. And, you know, this doesn't take much interpretation, just looking actually at the rules of what's required to establish that you're a resident is pretty simple. You know, it's unfortunate that this happened, the mistake that, you know, hopefully future council, council people learn and, you know, we don't make that mistake in the future, but ignorant to the law unfortunately is not an excuse. It's not an excuse in this context, it's not an excuse even in the real world, you know. If you get arrested for something, you can't claim ignorance of the law. So, it's just unfortunate, I think, as a city, we need to move on. We have a lot of other pressing issues that I frankly rather be talking about. Dealing with the pandemic, the multiple pandemics that we're facing. So, you know, I think we've used enough bandwidth on this. And, you know, whatever happens tonight happens, but as a city, we need to come together and move forward and really focus on the actual issues facing our city. And to sum it up, I mean, you know, I hope this is again, a learning experience because, you know, if council people have questions about the law or what applies, we have to work with each other. You can feel free to always reach out to me as I'm experiencing the law, having worked many angles or go out to the law department for questions about what is appropriate. So again, I hope everyone makes use of that and reaches out and asks in the future if you have a question about something. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. My comment as a representative of the Eighth District is brief. Four years ago, I took an oath of office to uphold the charter and the code. My decisions tonight will be made based and guided by the charter and Mr. Congo's statements. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm disappointed in my colleagues by the fact that they're trying to confuse the matter here by saying someone was charged, somebody went off and did something wrong and these of nature. This is strictly about the qualifications of office, which are pretty simple. You have to be of age and you have to live in the district. They give you a similar circumstance. Everyone knows I'm a licensed CPA. Well, to get my license, I had to have a degree in certain. Well, to get my license, I had to have a degree in certain subjects studied. I had to have work experience. I also had to pass a comprehensive exam. And then once I got my license, I have to maintain it with continuing education and other standards. If I don't fail, if I fail to maintain it, I don't get my license renewed. And so quite frankly, it's the same thing. Do I meet the qualifications? And in this instance, if you don't live in the district, you don't meet the qualifications in the Charter. And that's just it. It's not whether or not you've done something wrong. It's not whether or not you were charged with something. It's not that somebody wrongly did something to you. You simply are not qualified to hold the office. And so all I'm saying, it's a simple yes or no here. And I think that us saying that people are charged or wrongly did something are just trying to confuse the issue because we don't want to speak solely to the matter, which is was the person qualified? If they don't live in the district, they weren't qualified. Thank you for my time, Mr. Freo.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Dixon?
Councilmember Dixon, are you still with us? Yes. Thank you, Councilman Freo. My comments will be simple also. I also have been, to me, complicated process since the month of July, up until this point tonight. And regardless of the decision that's made this evening, I'm representing the second district as at-large member regardless. And I uphold that because I'm an at-large member. So I just want the public to know that regardless of how we are operating the space, this process, as colleagues have already alluded to, and I won't get into all that again, but just wanted to make a statement that there, this process has been complicated since July. And there's been too many to talk about, he's, is he qualified or not? It's not really at this point. It's already been kind of taken away from him since July. So I think tonight, we're just kind of voting on a process that hasn't even been placed since July. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. Councilmember Guy?
Yes. The first thing I want to say is, is that since Floyd, everybody has decided all of a sudden in the country that systemic racism actually exists. And it exists right in this institution of city council. Because first of all, we have a president that presides, and the president has never sent us anything giving you the authority to run this meeting. So something happened in a back room. That's how systemic racism occurs, because you're part of the team with the mayor and the president and a few other people who are actively involved in the election for city council president. You've been involved with this from the beginning, you, the mayor, the president, because you thought you had an opportunity to remove Councilman Congo so that you could have a vote advantage in every aspect of city council. And so you guys illegally, in collusion, not only disconnected him from council meetings, turned off his pay, that's the mayor and his HR director, and canceled his benefits. So you guys have acted ultra virus, but that's how systemic racism works because black people don't have no rights under white supremacy and systemic racism. So now let's get to the issue of residency. Everybody in Delaware knows that Senator McBride has a house in the 13th district, and he has a house downstate in Sussex County. And everybody in Delaware knows that his primary residence is his house in the 13th district, and his secondary residence is down there in Sussex County. The whole state knows it. Front page article, no charges, nothing. That's how white supremacy operates. Here, Councilman Freo, Mayor Prezicki, and the people you control, the president of council, tried to take advantage of information that you heard, because none of you know anything. Because you don't, you don't go with Councilman Congo wherever he goes every day. So at the end of the day, what makes it even more egregious? Because he's told you directly that his residence is still where it's always been, and you don't have anything to counter that. And we're not here to hear people talking about what the newspaper said because the used newspaper and, and radio stations, they're all part of systemic racism and white supremacy. Alls they've done is wrote negative articles about black people. That's their specialty. And occasionally, they'll do something different. And during this election time, that's all they were doing. So we know y'all are all operating in collusion. I know it, because I've been hit at the NAACP for years. This is nothing new. July 9th, we went on vacation. Everything that you guys are talking about happened prior to August the 20th. Guess what happened between July 9th and August 20th? We were on vacation. He could have went to California for his whole vacation. In fact, we had a president of council who left the country one summer during the vacation period of time. So really, we don't even have any business caring where he is or where he went between July 9th and August the 20th. So I'll just sit that to the side. So you guys, white supremacy is basically trying to say you're trying to regulate what he can and can't do between, during the vacation period. But he's told you that he didn't change his residence. What you guys keep wanting to talk about is whether somebody moved, where they live.
Five seconds.
Five seconds. Well, salute white supremacy.
Forty-five seconds.
Okay, well, salute to your white supremacy systemic racism efforts. But I don't believe, see, in, in this city, we have a problem of black-on-black crime. And in the streets, it reflects itself in black men often murdering each other because of all of the stuff that goes on in this society as part of it. And now you guys are here with your white supremacy systemic racism move, trying to give black people a gun to kill one of the most outstanding black men in this community because you don't like where he was during vacation, but you don't even know where he was.
Please wrap up, sir.
Yeah, he told you he hasn't changed his residency, and you don't have any information to the contrary. But you think because they put you in charge of the meeting and the president ducked out of her responsibility, that we're just supposed to go along with it? Well, I don't believe that council's going to go along with it because everybody who cares knows that Trippie has maintained his residence right there. Where he lives, where he visits, where he sleeps is irrelevant. He hasn't changed residence.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of the defining moments that very few elected officials ever have to face in office. And that is when one has not lived up to their oath of office. And in our oath of office, one of the things we agree to do is to defend our charter. And in this case, nobody was out looking for anything. Nobody was trying to set anybody up. This is not about whether or not we like somebody or we're allies with them politically or socially or any other way. This is whether or not, on July 30th, then-councilmember Trippie Congo was doing an interview on WDEL. And during the course of that interview, he offered the fact that he had moved out of his district in spite of having over six months left on his term. He was questioned by the reporter about whether or not that was true, and he said it was. When it was, when he was questioning the reporter about whether or not that part of the charter was true, he made the statement, "Well, I can just move back." That's what it boils down to. It doesn't boil down to how we got to this point. He was the one who stepped out of his district, and that is what we're voting on tonight. On July 30th, did he in fact tell Avery Porter that he left his own district? His district was never left without representation. There's actually four council members at large that represent his district. Three Democrats and one Republican. So his district always had, and as evidenced, has always been protected by many of those at-large members. We're not excluding Councilmember Congo from holding any other public office. He has been elected to another seat this coming November. He will be. That he has been out of this since for well over two months now. He was also the one who, when told that he could have a public hearing, first said no, he didn't need one, and then came back and said yes. So the confusion has not been started by anyone other than Trippie Congo. I'm sorry to see you in this position, but this position has to be cleared. He gave up his seat on July 30th. He actually gave it up before that, but he gave it up publicly on July 30th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. President Shabazz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we've heard from everyone in reference to this purpose of this public hearing. And I, 16 years ago, took an oath, and each time I was elected, continued to take that oath that I would also uphold the Charter. As the presiding officer, there's my responsibilities and roles that I have to take, and it goes with lumps and bumps, and I've taken them with honor. The Charter reads that this office shall be immediately forfeited. Forfitted means to lose, to give up because of wrongdoing, and vacated. So in this instance, we are continuing to reference Section 2103, which states the act, the results of Mr. Congo's actions of forfeiting and vacating. And then Section 2101, which is council's responsibility to certify the vacancy. I've heard some of the comments from council members, you're mixing two things. And understanding of the Charter and the application of policy and rules has been a stumbling block this council has had. So the, the, where we are today is to remember our oath that we swore to uphold the Charter and the city council rules. And I will have done that in my application of duties as president, and I would do so in my vote for this evil. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, President Shabazz. Okay, at this time, I would like to, to read the question one more time and go to the vote. I hope everyone can hear me okay. At any time during the current session of city council, did Ernest Trippie Congo move his residence to a location outside of the borders of the second district he was representing, thereby immediately forfeiting his office as council member and rendering the district vacant pursuant to the Wilmington City Charter? A yes vote means he moved and vacated the seat. A no vote means he did not move and retains his seat. We'll go in order. Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Present?
Yes, present.
Councilmember Harley?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
No.
Councilmember McCoy?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Sorry, sir, could you repeat that?
Yes.
Councilmember Freo, yes. Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
No.
Councilmember Guy?
No.
Councilmember Walsh? Councilmember Walsh, are you with us? Is she muted?
Yes.
Councilmember Shabazz?
Yes.
Five yeas, four nays, to present, the seat will remain vacant. This time, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Sir, moved.
Second.
Oh, favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.